Hello. Hello. Testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing.
Three.
I'll second that. This is Council Henry.
Thank you. So I got a motion by Council Restucci, second by Councilor Henry, to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a new collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local Unit Number 760, Office, last clerical unit for the period ending, for the period January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2023. The city clerk will now start the roll call, please.
Councilor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Gareto?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Yes.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Counselor Restucci?
Yes.
Counselor Burisma?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yeah.
Counselor Hicks, was that a yes?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, you have seven yes votes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our next agenda item. Okay, we have animal control services consider authorizing the city manager to execute and administer an agreement with for animal control services with the Yakima Humane Society for 2021 at the level of service specified by council. This is the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is a follow-up to the discussion the council held on December 7th on some of the different scenarios and proposals for providing animal control services in the city in the coming year. After your discussion, the police chief had an opportunity to have a good and thorough conversation with the director of the Humane Society and is prepared this evening to kind of report on that discussion and hopefully answering questions that council had. But basically before you tonight are the two main options or proposals that were brought forward before. They've been providing this service for us for the last several years. Current fee in 2020 is just over $41,000. They are proposing a similar contract for next year at 20 hours a week, just like this year's, which would have an annual rate of $40,800 or a 40-hour a week coverage at an annual rate of $66,000. We had inquired around adding the control of feral cats. The chief was able to get some clarification. This would be essentially an add-on amendment to either of the options provided above. And the actual charges that we would receive would be based on the number of calls actually conducted. They did clarify that the charge of $30 for one cat includes $20 to recover a portion of the cost for spaying and neutering. It does not fully recover their costs. They have to bring in a veterinarian and an anesthetist and so forth. So they actually don't fully recover their costs for that $20. But that would be, that's the charge they're proposing. And then the $10 is for trapping it and then returning the animal after the spaying or neutering. They would not be adding this to routine trips back and, you know, the back and forth. And they too try to minimize the number of trips that they make during the days for efficiency. So this would be more for out-of-the-ordinary kinds of trapping. With that, I'll open it to questions or to see if the chief would like to share anything further from his conversations with Cheryl Haga, the director of YHS.
Good evening, everybody. I think that the city manager covered it pretty well as far as how that goes. And I just want to basically clarify a couple of things. I know the council had a, had some questions and looking for clarification on basically when you can or cannot adjust a contract. And that was also spelled out in, I think, what the city manager had reported to you earlier. I just wanted to make sure that there was no questions regarding that. But the way things sound is that is if they're in discuss, in discussing this with Ms. Haga, if there's anything that is significant or any changes that they are not resourced for and they will have to resource for the following year in order to accommodate any request by the city, then that has to be done prior to August of, August 31st of any given year. But anything that they're resourced for can come after the fact and they can start immediately, provided that there's an agreement and it reflects on the contract. Anything that you want to take away from the contract that does not present any budgetary challenges to the Humane Society, they can also respond to that at any given time throughout the calendar year where you're not having to, you're not having to abide by the August 31st date. And with that, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, I did want to point out for council's awareness, there had also been a question or clarification about the status of the animal control officers, are the employees of the city or employees of the Humane Society. It was always the Humane Society's intent to frame this as these are employees of the Humane Society. But we did identify a couple of instances in the contract language where it refers to them using the city in a possessive term, the city's animal control officer. We've tried to revise that language to make it more clear that these are the officers designated to serve the city by YHS. So you'll see those edits throughout the proposed contracts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Okay, we'll now start with the council. See if any questions or comments on this item. Counselor Farmer?
Yes, I've got several. In the contract, under three for Humane Society standby coverage, section B, can you explain to me how that works?
I'm not sure on the following. So if we-
Well, let me explain it a little bit differently then. It says that we will, for an additional $10 a day with a minimum of $300 per month for additional after-hours coverage plus a $30 call-out fee. So if we only have one call-out in a month, are we going to pay the $300 minimum is basically what my question is?
Well, yeah, for the one call-out and chief, you can confirm, can you confirm this? But my read of that was that if they had to do a call-out for additional after-hours coverage, there would be a $30 fee on each one, but that it would be a minimum of 300 a month. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah, that's correct. That's how I understand it. I'd have to specifically ask her and discuss it with the director to provide additional clarification. But that's how I'm reading it as well.
So we will, so if we only have one call-out, we will pay the $300. If we had 10 call-outs, we would pay $300. Is that correct?
We would pay $300 for the month plus the $30 for each call-out. So if there were 10 call-
Correct, yeah.
It'd be $600. If there were one call-out, it'd be, it looks like three, 330. Sorry, doing the math in my head.
I don't, I don't like that. I think, I think we're getting the short end of that deal. And then on number five, I think the chief explained it to me or explained it to us that we are basically stuck with this contract unless there's some gross something that they, that they do or we do against them. So we're, so if we were to get another offer somewhere along the line next year, we would not be able to entertain that offer until the end of the year. Is that, that's the way the chief explained it? Is that the way I understand it?
I believe that's correct. Not aware currently of any other entity that provides this service in the county. We were in conversation with individual who has indicated an interest in moving into this business, but doesn't expect to be ready to do that until at least 2022.
All right. And then in section 15, under assignment, first lines, we got a misspelled word. You have shall bought, and I believe it shall not be.
Oh, okay.
And then we're back to feral cats again. The Humane Society does take cats. Is that correct?
They do not, I was, but they will take some and do the spay and neutering services for them. Sorry, go ahead, chief.
I'm just confirming that they, they are designed to take cats just for, not for long periods of time. They, they can take them for longer periods of time. However, it's extremely costly to retain them there.
Okay. And then the, the, when we talked about the charges for the picking up and the spaying and or neutering of the feral cats, should that not be an addendum to this contract or part of this contract? And if, if we're going to have them do it, should it not be included in this contract?
So we were not able to obtain language from them or propose language or develop a specific amendment. And so waiting count, the direction of council as a whole, we had time for kind of that verbal discussion of what some of the elements would be. If council does wish to pursue that, then it would be an amendment to this contract mutually agreed to. They could be executed, you know, pursuant to the modification of the agreement.
Okay, that's all the questions I have right now.
Okay. Up next, we have Counselor Restucci.
My question, Mr. Mayor, is for Mr. Farmer. Mr. Farmer, if you don't like this contract and you're not, you don't want to approve it tonight, what do you want to do? Because we'd have to hold a special, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but you have to hold a special meeting in order to get coverage for next year, correct?
Our current agreement is a three-year agreement. Let me pull that back up here real quick. And this is the last year of that agreement. That's correct. It's, it's scheduled to sunset at the end of this year. The original, the agreement we're currently operating under was a, was a three-year agreement.
Okay, so if we don't do some, if we don't take action tonight, then we will go into 2021 without animal control coverage for the city. Is that correct?
I just, I'm trying to pull up the PDF version of it. All right, there we go. So I'm sorry, I had to go find the existing contract. So the term of the agreement was that this was to be in effect for a period of three years, beginning in January of 2018. I do not see, I don't see that there was a provision for extension beyond the original three years, although there is language that would allow amendment by mutual agreement. But there's, there's no specific reference to being able to extend the, the contract that we're currently under. It was entered into in 18.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So then my argument to council is I understand Mr. Farmer's concerns, but I don't want to go into 2021 without animal control coverage for the city. And if council wants to hold a special meeting before the end of the year in order to adopt a contract, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Restucci, this is Mike Farmer. My thought on the contract is my thought on the contract. If the council wishes to approve the contract, that's totally the prerogative of council members. Whether I like it or not is beside the point.
Sir, I agree wholeheartedly with you, sir. And I'm actually supporting some of what you're saying. So that's why I wanted to make sure that we had support of all council on this contract. But I understand, that's why there's seven of us. However, I just wanted to make it clear that if we don't do something tonight, that we either have to do something before the end of the year in a special meeting or we go into a new year without animal control. That's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Counselor Restucci. Up next, we have Counselor Hicks.
I agree with both of you there. I agree with the contract. I am iffy about the cat thing, but I could go forward.
Okay, Counselor Henry?
Just a comment. I personally think that this feral cat thing is just ridiculous. I don't think we need to add it at all. I've actually asked a few people in town. And I found a few people in the country that have mentioned problems with cats, but I just have not ran into this problem in town. It's the first I've ever heard of it in any city short of Louisiana or something where there's a real feral cat problem. So it's just in my opinion, I think adding anything that the city is going to spend money on for feral cats is ridiculous. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stremler?
I guess, one thing I was wondering about, we have, we have an awful lot of dogs running around town and I know we have a lease law. Is there no enforcement of lease law? Or what's going on with the lease law?
So the animal control officer is required to enforce city code related to loose or dangerous dogs. And in, under the current level of service, they are here on site approximately 20 hours a week. That includes close to halftime during the week, but they also alternate every other weekend, at least a Saturday here. So to the extent they're able to respond while they're here and see the animals and get them captured or they do try to do that. And then, of course, under our current contract, as under the proposed, there's the ability to call back an animal control officer if the animal is loose and potentially dangerous or is, you know, demonstrated that it's dangerous. So they've had, I think, we've got some numbers from them. It looks like, it looks like there, yeah, it looks like in terms of kind of their field services responding to dogs and or puppies. They break out dogs and puppies. In 2019, which is the last year they have full records for, they picked up over 220 dogs and another 90 puppies in Sunnyside. Most of those through their field services, about a couple dozen were brought in by the public.
I guess I have a little problem. We got so many stray dogs, but it seems like nobody really cares. And I say nobody really cares. It seems like nobody gets citations. You see dogs running down the street and nobody, it just looks like nobody cares. And I know a lot of people complaining about the dogs. As far as the cats, I know that they are a problem. I'm not sure it's worth the money they want for either. I kind of agree with, with Counselor Henry on that. It's, it may be a problem, but it's, to a certain extent, I do have a problem with nobody has much care about stray dogs except Humane Society. And they're not here 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And the dogs don't find, they're running around to the Humane Society. They, they're out whenever they want to be out. Nobody, nothing seems to happen to anybody. And I guess that's my frustration with it.
Okay, Counselor Burisma?
Yeah, so I guess I just have a comment. Just right here on the screen, right in front of me is, is a page from this agreement, Article 17 entitled modification of agreement. So if at any time before August 31st of any year, we decide that we need to make some changes, we can do that if we send out the proper notice and all of that. And so I think that, you know, we're not binding ourselves to something that is impossible to change, update, or improve upon. With Mr. Restucci, I'm a little reluctant to end the year and start the new one without any kind of animal control agreement. So I guess I would say that I'm in favor of going forward with this as it is written. And if it needs to be modified, let's send out the proper notification and modify it.
Thank you. Okay, I do have just on section, actually, let me see, section four of the agreement. And this is for the part-time one. It talks about the dollar amount $3,400, but the written amount says $5,550, which is a 40-hour agreement. So I want to just make sure we clarify that.
They did send us a corrected version of it. That was a typo on their end. I thought we had the right one when we were making the edits for the clarifying the employment. But yes, Cheryl did acknowledge that was supposed to say 3,400. That was just a cut and paste from the full-time agreement.
And I did read both of them. I did notice that that was the dollar of the full-time agreement. So I kind of noticed it was probably just a matter of changing that, that number there. And that was the only question I had. And I kind of like the level of service that we're getting. I wish they were here, you know, when the dogs were running around loose, but unfortunately the dogs or they get out of their kennel or their backyard or the house whenever they choose to. So it's kind of hard for us to have somebody here 24/7, you know, to try to catch those animals. But I too have not heard, talked to a few different neighbors and they didn't think there was any problem with, with cats. But then again, I'm not home almost all day long, so I don't, I don't see those as much as maybe someone who stays home maybe retired and sees that those cats running around. So personally, I have not seen it. And my neighbors that I've talked to briefly, they said that they don't believe there's a problem either. So, but I am in favor of the part-time one. That way it is. And I agree, we need to have something in place in the event that we do need to, you know, take care of an animal that's dangerous. We have somebody to talk to versus us trying to deal with it through the police department. So just as a reminder, there is two options before, before us council, part-time and a full-time 20-hour and 40-hours. So whenever you make a motion, please keep that in mind, okay? So what is desire of council on this item?
This is Counselor Henry. I'd move to approve at the 20-hour.
I'll second that. This is Counselor Restucci.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Counselor Henry, second by Counselor Restucci to authorize the city manager to execute and administer an agreement for animal control services with the Yakima Humane Society for the 2021 period, which constitutes of 20 hours per week. Mr. City Clerk, you do roll call, please.
Counselor Farmer?
So?
Counselor Restucci?
Yes.
Mayor Gareto?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yeah.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Yes.
Counselor Burisma?
Yes.
Mayor, you have six yes votes and one no vote.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Up next, we have 2021 classification and compensation schedule. Consider adopting an order setting the 2021 classification and compensation schedule. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is part one of a kind of a two-step process that is required in order to adopt the enabling ordinances for your 2021 annual budget. This first step is adopting the classification and compensation schedule for city positions. This reflects the various wage and salary schedules that are contained in all of the currently effective collective bargaining agreements. There are five CBAs that are currently in effect for 2021 that have been approved and adopted by both parties and already executed. And then there is a placeholder in the contract for the two bargaining agreements that have been outstanding. One is the clerical, which council took action on just a moment ago. The other is the Teamsters Public Work Agreement. There is some funding set aside, a placeholder amount for each of those agreements pending council's action. And then lastly, based on practice set by council in 2017 to authorize a cost of living adjustment for all of the non-represented employees at the rate of the average of the COLAs in each of the active bargaining agreements. That average for the five agreements currently in effect for 21 is 2.2%, which is shown in your schedule attached there. We're also showing in the proposed classification and compensation schedule just a summary of the positions both authorized and funded by council in these budgets. And so you'll see that information summarized for you there as well. I want to acknowledge our HR assistant, Victoria Hernandez, who helped put this together this year in the absence of the finance director. And I very much appreciate, appreciate her work, her thorough work on all of this. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council, we'll go down the list and see if you have any questions or comments on this item. We'll start with Deputy Mayor Stremler.
No questions.
Counselor Burisma?
I have no questions at this time, sir.
Counselor Restucci?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Henry?
No questions from me, sir.
Counselor Farmer?
No questions.
Counselor Hicks?
No questions, sir.
And Mr. City Manager, the range that we had on those agreements, I think I seen a high of 2.8 and a low of 1.5, is that correct?
I believe, I think the highest is 2.5. Let me just double-check that. The PD support agreement ended up at 2.5. Oh, the guild, you're right. Police Guild is a 2.8. The firefighters, theirs was based off of, rather than a set percentage in the contract, they negotiated based off of the consumer price index, the inflation rate. And in the contract agreement, we had set a fixed range that it could float within floor of 1.5% or a maximum of 2.5%. And the implicit price, or not the implicit price, the consumer price index, the inflation rate actually fell below 1.5% this year, which is yeah, almost unprecedented. Um, but th- that's why theirs is at that low end. So we took the combined average of all of those.
Okay, one point five to two point eight, and we ended up with two point two. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, um, what is the desired counsel on this item?
Mr. Mayor, this is Mr. Burisma. I'll second that.
And the mover was Henry, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, uh, motion by Counsel Henry, second by, uh, by Counselor Burisma to adopt an order setting the twenty twenty-one classification and compensation schedule. Mr. City, Mr. City Clerk, you do roll call vote, please.
Deputy Mayor Stromler.
Yes.
Counsel Burisma.
Yes.
Counsel Ristucci.
Yes.
Counsel Henry.
Yes.
Counsel Farmer.
Yes.
Counsel Hicks.
Yes.
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes votes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, up next we have our big one, which is going to be our twenty twenty-one budget adoption. Consider adopting an ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-one budget as presented. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I, I agree. This is, uh, uh, this is the big, big item on tonight's agenda. Uh, this represents, uh, many, many hours of work by council, by staff. Um, and, uh, we've been fortunate, uh, that even though this year has had, uh, some almost unprecedented, uh, impacts, uh, and effects on both the economy and on uh, our revenues and, and expenditures due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and, and, uh, related effects. Um, we are coming out of this, uh, I, I think fairly stable and importantly are able to maintain council's commitment to strengthening our ending fund balance in the general fund, which has historically been one of our weaker funds. And as we continue in a period of, of uncertainty, um, being able to know that in next year's budget, we've set aside a full million dollar, uh, ending fund balance reserve and still avoided, uh, any seri- significant or severe cuts to either services or, uh, staffing. Um, you know, it, it, it gives us a, a, a measure of peace of mind that, uh, we can uh, hopefully react to and respond to, uh, whatever twenty twenty-one chooses to throw at us. Um, I hate, I don't want to tempt fate, but, uh, I feel a lot better going into twenty twenty-one with a million dollars in the bank. Uh, than I have gone through this year with, uh, a beginning fund balance, uh, a little less than that. Um, we also were very pleased, uh, as we went through this process. Um, each of the department heads spent a considerable amount of time really critically examining, uh, their spending plans and, and budgets to make sure that, especially in the general fund, we came in uh, at a sustainable and, and, uh, responsible level and enabled us to make some of the critical investments that council had, I, had identified and prioritized uh, in the arenas of public safety and infrastructure. Um, we do include in here, uh, funding for the new firefighter position. We include in here some funding to acquire some leased police vehicles. Uh, we include also down payments on rebuilding our, uh, equipment rental and replacement funds. And so these are all steps that, uh, position us, uh, to, to sustain services, to, uh, to build our, uh, capacity for future needs. Um, and hopefully come out of this pandemic, uh, and, and hopefully a, an economic recovery that, uh, gives us even more, uh, options in the future. Um, this is slightly different, as council is aware, slightly different from the preliminary budget that I proposed to you at the end of October. Um, there were some modest adjustments that resulted from the adoption of our third quarter budget amendment in November. Uh, we presented those to you on December seventh. Um, and in total, we're, uh, expen- we're budgeting about a, almost a, uh, thirty-one point seven, uh, million dollar, um, overall budget across all funds. Um, we are expecting about in the general fund, about thirty, thirteen million, excuse me, thirteen million in revenues in the general fund, uh, little less than twelve million in operational expenditures in the general fund. Plus, as I mentioned, setting aside a million dollars as the ending fund reserve. And, uh, we also have, uh, a pre-lift, uh, retirement benefit that we, uh, set aside in there. Um, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, um, about the twenty twenty-one budget.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Okay, now we'll go on the list and see if you have any questions or comments on this, uh, agenda item. We'll start with, uh, Counselor Hicks.
Oh, no questions. It's just a comment. I'd like to thank city staff for all their hard work.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Stromler.
No, no questions.
Counselor Burisma.
Um, no, I've had the opportunity to read through this budget a couple of different times now, and I'm quite pleased with it and like to echo the comments of, uh, Mr. Hicks.
Thank you.
Counselor Farmer.
No questions.
Counselor Ristucci.
No questions, just a comment, Mr. Mayor. Um, my previous comments and the comments of my, my fellow colleagues on the council here. Um, this is a great budget. Uh, kudos to the staff. Mr. City Manager, you guys have done a great job, especially given the uncertainty with COVID nineteen. Uh, I think this, the staff's done an outstanding job with this budget, and this will be my seventeenth budget. So, uh, um, I, I have to say, uh, um, I'm pretty impressed.
Thank you.
Counselor Henry.
Um, I just to comment myself, this is my third budget, nowhere near seventeen. But I would like to say it has been getting easier since the beginning, and I would like to thank, um, our city manager for coming in, stepping in and doing exactly what we asked him to do. That was manage this budget and do it in a way that made it easier for us. So, thank you for that and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And, um, I, I guess, you know, I, same thing, again, when we talked about it last time, you know, obviously staff, it seemed like you really stepped up, uh, under your leadership and then um, this budget, you know, process was, uh, easy and I really think it's a good, good budget. Um, moving forward, I think we'll be in a much better position with the city and, uh, future audits, uh, having a, a good, uh, healthy balance and, uh, moving forward, making that grow to a point that, uh, we can sustain a potential dip in recession or dip in, you know, re- re- um, um, revenue. So I'm really happy that we are busy tackling some of the bigger issues we've been looking out for quite some time. A couple of council members, uh, will remember that, uh, well back, we talked about basically not, potentially not having money to run payroll because we were so tight on, on our, our, um, general fund. So I'm really happy to see this get turned around. And, uh, again, you know, thanks to staff for stepping up and under your leadership, like I said, and then hopefully we keep on, uh, making this, uh, city, uh, much better financially. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so what is desire counsel on this item?
Move to approve.
I was.
Jim Ristucci.
Up. I have a second. This is John Henry.
Okay, motion by Counsel Ristucci, second by Counsel Henry to adopt an orders adopting the twenty twenty-one budget as presented. Mr. City Clerk, please do roll call vote.
Counsel Hicks.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Stromler.
Yes.
Counsel Burisma.
Yes.
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Counselor Farmer.
Yes.
Counsel Ristucci.
Yes.
Counsel Henry.
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes votes.
Thank you very much. Uh, motion passes and, uh, one last thing to worry about for the rest of the year. So thank you for that. All right. Thank you, counselors. Um, up next we have resolution extending COVID nineteen pandemic response. Move to adopt a resolution extending the proclamation of emergency and adopting findings of fact and procedures for managing the COVID nineteen public health emergency. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a familiar update. We have been reviewing and, uh, updating the emergency declaration about every two months, uh, as the pandemic has progressed. Uh, adjusting it along the way periodically as either the, uh, statewide framework for, uh, managing the pandemic has, uh, evolved and, and been updated, or as our own circumstances have changed. Um, right now, we are unfortunately in a bit of a, a resurgence, uh, both nationally and, and locally of COVID nineteen infections and hospitalizations and sadly, uh, loss of life. Um, and so we are, uh, proposing kind of carrying this forward through the end of the year and into the beginning of next year. Um, the, uh, the main changes, uh, in this particular one has been some clarifying or, uh, uh, updating of language to adjust to the, uh, evolving state, uh, structure or framework around managing the pandemic, the, 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 the mix of both proclamations and then actions, uh, regulatory actions by local health districts and so forth. Um, so we've tried to kind of update the language and make sure we have the flexibility to continue adapting. One thing that, uh, has served us well is, uh, the ordinance, uh, offers some flexibility so that as uh, those state mandates change or as we get more latitude and flexibility to open up, we've been able to take advantage of that. One example of that that I want to specifically call council's attention to in, in this proposed, uh, ordinance update involves, uh, uh, council operations and specifically public comment. When we first moved to the virtual environment, uh, the initial framework that, uh, council put in place in one of the first ordinances, uh, when we could no longer hold in-person public meetings or have the public join us, uh, in person. Um, council set the protocol in the ordinance to have councils, uh, excuse me, to have public comments submitted in writing in advance, either by email or electronically on our, on our website. Um, we've had only a limited number of comments submitted in that way. Um, in the meantime, council and, and staff, we've become much more, uh, adept at managing the, uh, online, uh, environment, uh, the Zoom meeting process and how to bring people in successfully and how to, uh, manage, uh, participation during a Zoom meeting. And so the, the main change that you'll see in this, uh, ordinance that I'm proposing to you in council procedures in, uh, it's section three. Where are you? Three C is, I'm proposing that council, if it wishes, uh, in this ordinance to also offer the capacity uh, for public comment to be accepted via this online conferencing application or Zoom application. If you wish to schedule that, as you did in the past at the beginning of your meeting and allow for the three minutes of public comment, uh, certainly seems like we are, uh, at a point where, where we, you know, we can manage the application successfully and, and assist the public with that. So that's the one, uh, adjustment. Um, I think it, you know, it's important for us as staff to hear the public, uh, and have that live interaction. Uh, and I, I, I certainly I've, I've heard that from, from council members too in the past. Um, and so that, uh, that was the, kind of the most substantive proposed change that I'm, I'm recommending in, in this ordinance. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And, um, we'll start with our Counselor Burisma. Questions or comments?
Thank you, sir. Uh, just to comment at this point, I do appreciate the change to the public comment section. It does rather feel like throughout the course of this year that we as council have been operating in a vacuum and not getting a lot of feedback unless we go out and search for it either before or after the meeting. And so I do appreciate that change to allow the public to begin to, uh, participate live in our Zoom meetings. So thank you for that change.
Counselor Ristucci.
I have to echo the sentiments of Counseler Burisma. Um, Mr. City Manager, you know, we've discussed this in our virtual lunches and I'm, I'm really glad to see that um, we, we have the capability to do that now because I do believe we have been missing something, um, in the meetings. Obviously, the one-on-one between us, but more so having the public being able to come and redress their government is so important, especially in this time right now. So, uh, I, I, I look forward to having public comment again, whether we're in Zoom or not.
Counselor Farmer.
I would agree. I welcome the change to allow public comment, uh, uh, and thank you for that, adding that to the, to the list.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Stromler.
Just echo the comments of the rest of council. This is a, a welcome change. Thank you.
Counselor Hicks.
Like all my other constituents, yeah, I welcome the change.
Counselor Henry.
No comment. Thank you.
Okay, and I don't have any questions or comments. So, uh, what is desire counsel on this item?
Move to approve.
I have a second. This is Counsel Henry.
Okay, uh, motion by Counsel Hicks, second by Counsel Henry to approve a resolution extending that proclamation of emergency and adopting findings of fact and procedures for managing the COVID nineteen public health emergency. Uh, Mr. City Clerk, you do roll call, please.
Counsel Burisma.
Yes.
Counsel Ristucci.
Yes.
Counselor Farmer.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Stromler.
Yes.
Counsel Hicks.
Yeah.
Counsel Henry.
Yes.
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes votes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, up next we have, uh, items from council members. Uh, council request status report. Mr. City Manager.
All right. I'll give the clerk a moment to, oh, yep, she's brought that up on screen. So, uh, this month, only a few of these items, because of winter, will have, uh, new updates. Um, uh, no new, no new change on the, uh, plan to try to address disabled parking at the senior center. The tree replacement plan, let's scroll down. I think we've carried that forward into the next page. Yeah, there we go. Um, as we briefed council in November, uh, we're doing some prep work over the winter to get ready for planting in spring. Uh, we've got to remove, uh, some of the old stumps and, and do some soil work in those, uh, in the sidewalk panels. Um, and then as we get ready to, uh, prepare a planting plan in the spring, we'll be bringing that information back to council for further consideration. So the next update you'll get on this will be in the early spring of twenty twenty-one. On the guardrails on Riverside, um, what, the, uh, Public Works Director has been doing, uh, further research into this. Um, each layer we peel back, uh, reveals an additional complexity to this. Um, the most recent being the realization that the, this road on Riverside was originally laid out, uh, by the county. Um, and the, uh, county road and the right-of-way don't always line up in, uh, uh, neat way. Um, so we've got areas where we might have to address, uh, some right-of-way acquisition or, or so forth in order to actually, uh, be able to execute this. We are working on, uh, another element, which is by, uh, by the requirements of these funding programs, uh, through DOT and so forth. Uh, before they will entertain an application for grant funding for safety, we have to have adopted a safety plan for our roads. And so staff have begun working on that with our contracted engineer, H, HLA, uh, to produce that safety plan, which will need to bring back to council for adoption. Uh, before we're going to be eligible to submit a grant application to secure safety program funding. Um, but that program would hopefully, uh, support funding for projects like this that are addressing pedestrian and, uh, vehicular safety issues. So we've got more work to get there, um, but are continuing through that process. On, I do know that staff are continuing to address, uh, the complaints that we get periodically regarding the presence of homeless residents at the city's parking lot. Uh, staff are seeking to maintain safe conditions there and support rehousing efforts for, uh, these residents. Police have maintained increased patrol patrols in the area to try to observe any alleged, uh, criminal activity. And code enforcement has met, uh, uh, every week, almost, and sometimes multiple times a week, uh, to propose, uh, to post cleanup notices and, and keep them on task with keeping the area cleaned up, which they've been substantially doing. We've also learned recently that the Department of, State Department of Social and Health Services is one of the agencies actively working to try to rehouse these, these residents over the winter. So we are making progress, trying to make progress there. Other homelessness issues are, we're, we're just kind of monitoring developments in, in the arena. The, the Rod's House Shelter for Youth 18 to 24 has been up and running for several weeks now and is, is working out pretty well. But that's currently the only homeless shelter beds in the city of Sunnyside. I think there's eight beds in that facility. We have learned that Noah's Ark in Wapato is recently reopening and there's a winter shelter that'll be opening in Tapanish that'll help serve homeless residents in those areas. But looking ahead, one of the pending issues that are out there is both the federal and the state's order on that have put in place moratoriums on evictions are currently both set to expire at the end of December. The state's order is currently being litigated by some property owners who have been struggling with, with tenants that aren't able to pay their rent and they're not able to evict them. The census recently reported that it's estimated that over 170,000 Washington state households are behind on their rent right now. And there is a concern that if these eviction orders expire and no other program or plan or framework is put in place between the state and financial institutions and the landlords, property owners, we could see a massive disruption and dislocation of additional homeless residents in the middle of winter. So we're watching that. We aren't aware of any significant population here in Sunnyside that are subject to that. We don't have that level of data, but we do know that that's a concern statewide. The police chief, we just gave you an update in the monthly report released yesterday, or Thursday of last week on the fire department residency program. As council knows, we've approved the, you've approved the contract for construction. Construction is getting underway shortly. On December 21st is when the contractors scheduled to begin. So excited to see the, the residential improvements be made for that. The, the chief is on the line. If you, if you have any additional questions, certainly on that one. And on credit card transaction fees, I, I'll use this as an opportunity to share that we have had an update from our finance director on her recovery from her earlier injury and surgery. She is still out on medical leave. She has been scheduled for an additional surgery. And she is beginning to reengage. Her medical providers is allowing her to have some limited verbal engagements. So as to kind of provide information sharing and, and exchange. For example, she's been helping us make sure we navigate the year-end close and know all the, have all the tasks identified that need to happen for that in the coming months. But it's, it'll be sometime further before she's fully back in the office. But we do hope to then be able to follow up on that analysis because she had done that work earlier this year. Or earlier, yeah, earlier in the year and has that background on that, would be able to provide that. And so we're hoping to bring that to council as soon as she's able to. And that would be, that's my report on those.
Mr. City Manager. Okay, is there any questions or comments on council request status? You have no question or comments. We'll move on to our next item, which is going to be other reports, announcements under questions by council. Councillor Henry, any reports, announcements or questions from you?
None for me, sir. Nope.
Okay, councillor Hicks.
Oh, the only, I guess, report I would have is a lot of people are reporting or letting me know that a lot of their Christmas decor is getting taken from the yards.
Oh.
Other than that, up in the
Okay, councillor Burisma.
Just a comment, sir. As everybody knows, the light and implement parade had to be canceled for this year, but I'm hoping that everybody noticed that the parade went driving around the city and I very much appreciate everybody who was in on that and made that happen. I stood out in the front yard of my house and watched them go by and waved and videotaped and had a great time with that. So kudos to everybody who put that together.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stromler.
No questions or comments.
Councillor Farmer.
I have nothing.
Councillor Ristucci.
Just a quick item, Mr. Mayor. As Chair of the Cog, I just wanted to inform council that we held our last general membership meeting of, of the year last week. And as the manager reported at the workshop, we heard from John Cooper from Yakima Valley Tourism Board. But at the same time, we also gave out the Outstanding Achievement Award this year. This year was given out posthumously to the late Norm Childress and his wife was in the audience to receive it. That's all. Oh, and, and since this is the last meeting of the year, hopefully if council takes action. Yeah, actually, we I want to wish my fellow council members a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. And I have a few mayor's awards for some individuals who kind of stepped up to the, to the plate and kind of went above and beyond what's kind of expected on a daily basis. And we have our Delala Sands Finance Supervisor Shane Fisher, our Public Works Director, Janet Ranhel, Ranhel, Public Works Administrator Assistant/Deputy City Clerk, and Victoria Hernandez, which is our Human Resource Assistant. And there is like this, in recognition of the said employees for outstanding civic achievement to the residents of, of Sunnyside or their, their contribution in submitting CARESAC reimbursement requests and access of this for Janet Ranhel, access of $300,000 during the absence of the Finance Director. For Miss Science, for outstanding civic achievement to the residents of Sunnyside for her substantial contributions and preparing and completing the 2021 budget during the absence of the Finance Director. In recognition of Victoria Hernandez for outstanding civic, civic achievement to the residents of Sunnyside for her contributions in preparing and completing their classification and compensation portions of the 2021 budget during the absence of the Finance Director. And in recognition of Shane Fisher for outstanding civic achievement for the, to the residents of Sunnyside for providing significant support to the city manager and finance supervisor and development and review of the 2021 budget. So I want to recognize these individuals, obviously, under the supervision of city manager and recognize them for their, their hard work in getting this CARESAC stuff done and budget finalized, reviewed, and then putting a bunch of other documents for us together so that we can make informed decisions for the budget and the city. So thank you to these individuals and thank you to city manager for, for getting these awards put together for us. And honestly, it's easy to say thank you, but it's obviously a lot of work behind the work that they did. So thank you for that as well. Okay, so up next, we have our upcoming council meetings. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor, and for that recognition. And then coming up for, for council, I'm sorry. Moving my packet around and making noise. So coming up, the first question we have for council is we have a if we follow our normal pattern of on the first Monday of the month, holding a workshop, that would come on January 4th. At the moment, we don't have planned topics. Most of the organizing activity of council for the coming year is scheduled for the first regular meeting. So I'm, we're open to council's wishes or preference, whether you wish to retain that on the schedule or, or cancel it. On January 11th would be our first regular meetings. We start with the Sunnyside Investment, excuse me, Industrial Development Corporation's special meeting. This is a joint meeting with the city and the port of Sunnyside. That historically has been scheduled at 6:00 PM and usually takes about 10, 15 minutes to go over the minutes and then select officers for the coming year. The regular meeting, we've set aside time tentatively for the council's organizing activities around any board and commission appointments, subcommittee appointments, outside committees. Our public, excuse me, our planning supervisor is hoping to bring forward a public hearing on an annexation clarification. This is the item that he referenced briefly during the December 7th workshop. We found that in 1993, during the process of annexing some of the parcels south of the I-82 interchange off of 241, portions of YVH that were thought to have been incorporated into the city do not appear to have actually been, been incorporated. So this is to clarify that and bring it up to date with everyone's current understandings. And then we have a couple of items from the Public Works Department for discussion and possible action related to some infrastructure improvements and expansion. We're also hoping to bring a proposed lease agreement for the port's hangar development on the city airport property. So those, that's what we have already queued up for the beginning of the year and, and with that, I'll kind of open it to to mayor or council as to how you wish to handle the January 4th workshop.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this is councillor Ristucci.
Yes, sir.
Sir, I would move without objection that we cancel the January 4th, 2021 workshop meeting.
Hey, council, do I hear any objections? Okay, you have no objections. So order January, Monday, January 4th, 2021 workshop meeting has been canceled. Thank you for that. And our first meeting in January will be January 11th. It sounds like we have a few items already on there. So we'll have a busy start to our year. So we are good to go for that part. Councilors, any other additional items you want to see in the agenda? Please let city manager, myself know and we'll try to get them in there as soon as possible and get those addressed. Up next, we have our items from city manager and department heads. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Tonight I'll focus on, on two items. I'll start with an update on where we're at with the COVID-19 pandemic. Infections and deaths continue rising in the United States. However, tonight, for the first time, we now have safe and effective vaccines that have been approved and are in the pipeline for distribution over the next three to six months. So it's, it's quite a milestone today. The, the, I think I, I saw a report that a nurse in New York named Sandra Lindsay received one of the first vaccines. So it is, it is remarkable accomplishment and very welcome news to, to kind of see this step taken in, in the fight against COVID. Unfortunately, I have other not so pleasant updates. Since council last met three weeks ago, the United States has recorded about four million new cases to bring us to a total of about 16.4 million in total. We are averaging a little over 210,000 cases a day in the country. Three weeks ago, when council had its last regular meeting, 88,000 Americans were hospitalized. Now 110,000 are hospitalized. In Washington, we've recorded about 200,000 cases so far. And over the last three weeks, Yakima County has added more than 3,000 new COVID-19 cases to reach 17,572 as of this evening. Since your last regular meeting, 17 more county residents have lost their lives. And 47 county residents are now hospitalized, eight of whom are on ventilators. The Yakima Health District has partnered with the city and Comprehensive Health Services to set up, as you know, a free community testing site at our community center in South Hill Park. It can serve up to 300 persons a day, Sundays through Thursdays. In its first week of operation, from the 6th through the 10th of December, the site finished 546 tests and about one in five of those tests came back positive for COVID-19. Preliminary data we got from the Health District is that the highest positivity rates here in Sunnyside were among teens and adults in their 30s and 40s. Now, this test is the more comfortable version. I guess it's not the one that tickles your brain. There is no charge for the test. You don't need insurance or documentation and anyone may seek a test at this site, whether you have symptoms or not. And results are available back in about three to four days. So we are encouraging people to, to, if they have symptoms or just want to, you know, have that assurance or peace of mind about it, to go ahead and seek that out so that we have the best possible data about the pandemic. Like area hospitals and schools, we are also seeing the impacts from staff absences due to either potential COVID-19 exposures or testing in isolation protocols. Last week, for instance, we had a handful of employees from different programs out following isolation program, protocols for several days because of potential exposures in different, different instances. On Thursday, we did have one employee come into a city facility who determined they had a fever using our voluntary self-check station. They reported that to their supervisor and left to get tested and isolate. And our public works team immediately disinfected those spaces that the employee had been using during the week. So we appreciate council support for that. That was one of the COVID-19 related purchases we made earlier this year for disinfection equipment. And we've been able to put it to good use. All this to say, there is light at the end of the tunnel. We're not quite through that yet, but please keep up your efforts to slow the spread of COVID-19 over the holidays. Wear a face mask whenever you leave your home, stay six feet apart from others, limit non-essential travel and gatherings with people who don't live with you. Wash your hands and sanitize surfaces often. We know these are not perfect solutions. They reduce your risks of infection, but don't eliminate them. Even so, they are the best tools we have until the new vaccines become widely available over the next few months. And then my second item, as I think council members have already acknowledged, this is our last meeting of 2020. And in these difficult times, I do want to recognize that city staff have been working hard while adjusting to the pandemic. And there is much good news to share about the city in 2020. And I'd like to take a moment just to recap a few examples. For instance, in February, before COVID, hard to believe there was a time before COVID, but in February, several of us had the opportunity to go over because the, to Olympia, because the Washington Economic Development Association awarded the city, the port, YCDI and Oster mushroom farms, the 2020 Economic Development Project of the Year for Business Retention, recognizing us for our work to keep this business and more than 200 jobs in the state. During the spring, our finance techs successfully helped most utility customers transition from in-person cash payments to our online and Dropbox options. Before the pandemic, our finance techs typically handled more than $70,000 in cash payments from in-person customers each month, which was both time-consuming and in COVID, a health risk. Department heads and I launched a new monthly report to council in May to provide more data on city activities and updates on key projects and initiatives. The police department weathered a severe COVID-19 outbreak that affected a quarter of the department in May and yet maintained essential services and public safety throughout. We have kept violent crime rates pretty steady in 2020, although property crime rates have been trending higher and we are seeing increased gang activity countywide. We hired a new planning supervisor in June. Mike Shodworth has already started our comprehensive plan update process, renewed, excuse me, reviewed internal work processes, completed some unfinished zoning and annexation requests, and is implementing an online permitting system. Our police, in partnership with fire and law enforcement, successfully handled several nonviolent protests over the summer in response to police actions in the death of George Floyd. The process went smoothly here and earned positive local media coverage for Sunnyside. In July, our state Supreme Court Justice Mary Yu tweeted recognition of the Sunnyside Municipal Court for our innovation and using our drive-up window to ease court congestion safely during the pandemic. We put out a video and other information and distributed thousands of masks in support of the county's mask-up-to-open-up campaign that helped reduce infections and hospitalizations by more than 80% in the late summer. reduce infections and hospitalizations by more than eighty percent in the late summer. We've completed work on the rehabilitation of Skyline Reservoir and sidewalk safety improvements on East Edison, installed an electric vehicle charging station downtown, replaced the trees on Y V H and restriped lane lines on North Sixth. In August, Sunnyside voters approved by fifty two percent Proposition One to authorize the council to enact a sales tax increase to fund transportation projects. This will enable the city to proceed with much needed work on Midvale Road, Sixth Street, Schoon Road, Y V H, and more over the next ten years. The Fire Department took our new brush truck into action on the Evans Canyon Fire, and we acquired an eight year old rescue engine with an ambulance box from a district in Oregon for about one third the cost of a new engine. And this will enable us to retire our oldest engine. In November, we distributed almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in small business COVID nineteen assistance grants through the Y C D A. And finally, this month, the State Auditors' Office completed our twenty nineteen finance and accountability audits and has advised us that our audit will have no findings or management letter items. This will be Sunnyside's first clean audit in nearly a decade. It's been an amazing year. I have appreciated the wonderful support of staff and the 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 support of council and and all the hard work that you and everyone involved in in the city do and the great work of the residents in this community in in, you know, being resilient and remaining optimistic as we navigate these very strange and difficult times. But I certainly wish all of you happy holidays and am very grateful for for what we've been able to accomplish together this year. With that, I'll turn it over to the department heads. Let's see. Let's start with Police Chief Escalera. You're unmuted, it looks like.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to touch base real quick on the COVID picture. We've been also engaged in a lot of issues where our violent crimes has really increased and our gang activities increased. And so we've been bringing individuals in and a lot of questioning, a lot of talking. And several of them have tested positive for COVID in this in our questioning endeavors. However, our correction staff has done amazing job of ensuring that everything is deconbed immediately in the interview rooms, police cars, and also in the court and the lobby area there. So just huge kudos to them for staying on top of things. We're also going to be expanding the use of that disinfection tool to our sergeants. So when things are occurring, when we don't have the individual, the correction staff available to assist us with decon, then they're able to step in and put the gear on and get the stuff done. So so great job to them. And and hopefully, we can maintain a COVID free environment as much as we possibly can. We've also started our lateral selection process, and we've been talking to a handful lateral officers, and I've got him through the initial portion of the testing phase. And so we are looking at about two or three at the moment that that we're going to be progressing at an aggressive rate forward. And we'll see how that pans out at the very end. So currently, that's what we're working on. Thank you and happy holidays to everyone.
Sorry, I muted myself there. Chief Anderson, are you available?
I am. If you can hear me, I only have a couple of things, updates. We we had our civil service exam I bought on Saturday. The list had expired. We had twenty six. We once again, we did an in house test again, and we were able to get twenty six people from basically Eastern Washington. I'm not sure the farthest way. I think there was one that lived right down right on the other side of the border around the Dallas area. But for the most part, they're all locals. We also, I wanted to bring your attention. We have one individual that we're pretty proud of. I don't know if council members. We had a firefighter paramedic that we sent to the National Fire Academy, finished the managing company officer program. And he's also was recently offered the opportunity to take a position as a deputy chief for Yakima County Fire District Two up in Seala. So we're gonna we're not gonna lose him. He's gonna stay on as a volunteer with us and paramedic. But I wanted to publicly congratulate him for that accomplishment. And anything else, questions? Have a good New Year.
Chief, I'm not sure I heard you mention his name.
Oh, it's firefighter Mickey Gilly. I'm sorry.
That's good. All right. Thank you. And Chief, Public Works Director Fisher.
Thanks, Martin. Yeah, I just have one item. This Thursday, we're opening bids for the Swan Road Waterman Improvement Project over the fire station. Actually, I don't know if they'll do the fire station. They may just do it outside of City Hall just for for COVID reasons. We expect to have a pretty large turnout. So we may just kind of do it out the front lawn there. That'll be at ten o'clock on Thursday. And that's that's all I have. And happy holidays to everybody.
All right. Thank you. And Clerk Rattoria.
I wanted to share the Second Harvest is doing a food distribution on Thursday, December seventeenth at Sunny View Park for three hundred families from ten a.m. to twelve P M. Noon. And then the other thing is I just wanted to thank council and staff for just the transition to virtual. So thank you all for hanging in there with me.
Thank you very much. And those are the department reports.
Okay, so that's the last item on our agenda. Council members, any last comments for everyone else? All right, you know, comments, I just want to say again, thank you for everyone. It's always been a interesting year, to say the least, honestly, going from chamber meetings to Zoom meetings and having to learn all kinds of different platforms for online meetings. It was an interesting process. And I think we all kind of muddled through the whole process as a group. So thank you for bearing with me. And then I wrote a lot this year as well. And and obviously, it's been an interesting year, to say the least. So thank you, everyone. Hope you have a great holiday season, and we'll look forward to seeing you guys in twenty twenty one. There being no further business to come before council, and without objection, I adjourn this meeting at eight thirteen P M. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Good night, Mr. Mayor. Good night, council. Merry Christmas.
Thank you all. Happy holidays and happy new year.
I know. Everyone a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everyone.